All right, are we good to go? Are we streaming on TitleSlide? Excellent, all right. I'd like to call to order the Governance Committee. I am Commissioner Malloy. Good evening to Dr. Myers Small, to Dr. Jallow, our Executive Cabinet members, my fellow Board members, and to all of you in the community who are listening in. Our Board Governance Committee deals directly with how we conduct ourselves as a board, and this committee oversees training and professional development to enhance our ability to perform our roles as commissioners. We're also responsible for maintaining an effective working relationship with our superintendent and evaluating our superintendent. Governance facilitates the orientation of our new members through our board staff, and as a board, we are additionally charged with supervising and evaluating our board staff. Finally, the Governance Committee organizes board retreats for our ongoing professional development related to our interpersonal relationships, and we will continue to take input and recommendations from our state monitor, Dr. Shelley Jallow, to help us develop adequate governance policy to help us better meet board and district goals. So, welcome this evening. We have a very short agenda, hoping we can get through this pretty quickly. First and foremost, I want to remind everyone that when you are speaking this evening, please speak directly into your microphone, and you'll have to turn that on prior to speaking or to indicate that you'd like to speak. And make sure you turn off your mic when you are not speaking, and just press the red button in order to speak. Also, I wanted to request that any administrators who come to the podium just remember to turn on and off the microphone. All right, first on our agenda tonight, I don't see that we have any speakers addressing the governance agenda. If there are any members of the public who are here who'd like to speak. Go on, our second item. I believe I need to briefly pass the gavel over to President White for resolution consideration.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Malloy, and thank you for that brief summary. It's good to see committee chairpersons describe at each meeting what the purpose of their committee is, because the assumption shouldn't be that everybody knows what each of these committees does. I think at each meeting, it's been helpful, I know Commissioner Adams has done it, and I think other commissioners have done it as well, described their purpose, and I appreciate you continuing on in that tradition. It is now 5:38, which means, Commissioner, we are ahead of schedule, because I'm not supposed to get the gavel back until 5:40. There is just one resolution which I think will keep us ahead of schedule. Is that right, Madam Clerk?
That is correct.
And that is Resolution Number 64. I need a motion to advance for discussion, Resolution Number 64.
Motion.
It's been moved by Commissioner Malloy. Is there a second?
Second.
I heard a couple people. I think I heard Commissioner Adams to my right first. Any questions or comments regarding these additional pay resolutions? I'll begin, this time, on my right and make my way to the left. Commissioner Malloy?
No.
Commissioner Adams?
No.
Vice President Elliott?
Yes, Mr. President. This is, I was talking with the superintendent earlier about the whole counseling piece. I'm concerned that we're having to approve these resolutions for this work, and if you can go back down to the description, this work, because my thinking is, most of this stuff needs to be done during the school year, and so why are we doing it during the summer? I think there is one thing, when I saw the list, which I don't have in front of me now, it seemed to me that there was one task that could be done during the summer, but it seems to me that most of those other tasks should be done during the school year. And what I shared today was, I believe that the Counseling Department really is bespoke in terms of education, and that we need to be beginning to prepare our students from eighth going to ninth from the counseling perspective, of where our academic plan for our students. Haven't heard that. The counselor chief was supposed to come to an ESA meeting, but she got sick. But I'm concerned that the council, let me just be straightforward, I'm concerned that the counselors are not doing what they're supposed to be doing, because if they did, we would see improved academic success. I don't believe that our students, each one of those students have a plan in terms of their academic career, and I need you to respond to that if you can. And just tell me, how long have you been in this role that you're in?
Yes, I can absolutely respond. I've been in this role for two years.
Yeah, let me just, I can't really hear. I don't know if that mic is really working.
Can you hear me?
I don't know if it's being recorded. Just wanted to make sure it is. Okay, thank you.
Yes, so I've been in this role for two years now as the Director of Student Support Services, but I've also worked as a school counselor for 13 years in the Rochester City School District. So in terms of students having a plan for graduation, each one of our students have a four-year plan that counselors work with students on for graduation, and they meet with students throughout the year to review the four-year plan to ensure that they are prepared for graduation. So that happens throughout the year several times. In addition to that, each student in grades seven through 12 gets an annual individual review. That is when the counselor meets with them one-on-one to go over their academic goals, their social-emotional goals, as well as their college and career goals. A review is done on their academics as well as their attendance, and then we do next-step planning with our scholars, and that is through grades six through 12.
So why are we needing to have this number of counselors do this work? Why wasn't most of this work done during the school, during the academic year?
So as far as the summer work is concerned, we have many scholars that are in summer school. So if our scholars are in summer school, that means that they will need new course requests as well as schedules based upon whether or not they pass the courses in summer school, so we have to prepare those schedules in the summer to ensure that they're ready for school opening.
So you all, you all as counselors, only meet once a year with the students?
No, that is not correct. We meet several times throughout the year with students. We do the individual annual review. In addition to that, we meet with scholars. Every five weeks, we do cohort tracking with our scholars, as well as our staff members reviewing our information and meeting with our students as a cohort every five weeks, and then we meet with them individually as needed.
What vision does the department has, and after that, after you respond to that, have you all successfully met your outcomes, is my question?
Yes, so our vision is to prepare students academically, socially, as well as for college and career, post-secondary options, and our goal is to graduate students on time and ensure that they're successful beyond life after high school.
All right, so I'm going to ask this question, and you tell me, you push back on me, but I asked this, and you tell me where their needs are supported. I'm almost believing that the Counseling Department is a department that really should be getting our students across the line, the graduation line, where they are college and career-ready. Push back on me with that statement.
Yes, we are a part of that. We all work as a collective unit, the village approach, to ensure that we are all working with everyone to ensure that the students are ready for graduation. We do play a large component in that with meeting with students individually, checking in to see what their goals are, helping them to meet their goals.
I won't ask you to make this a public statement, but I'd like to know from your department where may be some of the barriers. So I don't know if the superintendent can help with that, to discuss that, but there has to be, you know, some barriers, because, you know, while we are at our highest graduation rate, it's been slow.
Yes.
And there has to be an urgency around this. We need to be taking this far higher than we've taken in the past, and there just seems to be some barriers, and we need to understand where those barriers are, so that we can move this needle even further and faster, so.
So absolutely. So part of the barriers that I identified when I came in this position, as well as doing a SWOT analysis with my staff, is the fact that they did not have a cohort tracking system in place across the district. So when I came into this position, there were two schools that used that method, so over the last two years, we worked to ensure that each school provides cohort tracking for our scholars, which is a five-week review of all of their academics, attendance, social-emotional needs, et cetera, and then putting a plan in place. So our next step is to create an early warning system so that our students who are in need of academic support or other type of supports are, we are alerted earlier in the process so that we can put those interventions in place for them.
What kind of strategies are used specifically for our ninth-grade students? They seem to be the ones to, because I don't remember the exact data right now, but they seem to be the ones that sort of fall through the crack, because what I believe is, is that they are getting adjusted to high school. So what kind of strategies can we put in place to make sure our ninth-grade students are successful so that their foundation is established, so that the, that most of our students, if not all of those ninth graders, are on their way to graduation in the 12th grade?
So part of the success is really looking at the lower grades before ninth grade, so really a focus on the middle school age and making sure they understand graduation requirements, to have the foundational skills to be prepared for ninth grade. So as part of that, really working with our seventh, eighth-grade counselors around graduation, understanding credits, understanding what our scholars need for transition from eighth to ninth, and having those type of presentations and conversations with those students. Part of that happens when we do our individual annual reviews as well. In addition to that, we really are in cohort tracking, looking at our ninth-grade students, and making sure that they are working to make sure they achieve a 2.5 or better, a 2.5 or better in the ability to earn five credits by the end of ninth grade is an indicator of graduating on time.
All right, so the task that you're asking us to approve for this resolution tonight, are those are the same tasks that are going, if you come back next year or the following year, are going to be the same tasks that we're going to be asked to approve, because it would seem to me that some of those tasks can be done during the school year, and that's my concern, that we're spending this kind of money during the summer?
Right, I definitely understand that scheduling is a huge component in this, because of the number of scholars that we have attending summer school. Our students who are coded yellow, so students who are in need of intervention are coded red, students who are in need of intense intervention have to have brand-new schedules, and that is something that we do over the summer. We are also looking to look into contracts for school counselors as well across the county. School counselors have contracts where they have 10 months and 20 days, where we don't have to lobby for the hours every year, it's a part of their contract, so we're looking to move into that direction so we don't have to continue to come to the board for hours.
Okay, I just, and this is something that I'm going to be talking to the superintendent about throughout the year, because I think that if we get, I mean, not only counselors, but, you know, just what goes on in the schools, but I really do think that if our counselors, if our students have a plan, that helps to inform what they're going to do academically. So if we find out initially, what is it that they want to do, and then, of course, course-correct as they move through those grades, that would certainly help, and I think also that that would provide them with the motivation that they need to do well in class, to be in class, to reduce suspensions. I just think that the counseling piece helps to inform their whole academic career.
That is correct.
Okay.
It definitely does, and that's the direction that we continue to move into.
All right, just know that this is something that's very important to me, that I'm going to be paying attention to, and I'm going to ask the department to do your best with our students, that everyone has a plan, that our students are working the plan. So thank you very much for answering my questions.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it.
Vice President Elliott, if I could just, Crystal, thank you so much for those explanations. You asked, what are some of the barriers relative to our students, and in addition to what Crystal stated, one, we have to certainly make sure that students are empowered to understand and know how many credits does it take to graduate with a Regents diploma, what does it take to earn honors or advanced designation, and so we need to certainly focus on our young people understanding what that is, because I can't tell you how many times as a former high school counselor, I'd have my students come to me, and I was just like, okay, you need four years of English, you need three and a half of social study, or four social studies, including Pig and, you know, et cetera. The other thing is that we really need to work more strategically with the Office of Parent Engagement and make sure parents are co-partners and co-laborers in this, because parents also, surprisingly, do not know what it takes to graduate with a New York sum. Some parents and caregivers don't know, so trying to figure out what types of professional development, what types of information, what types of planning that we can put together so parents clearly understand, and it's just as simple as putting together like a one-pager, but making sure they understand the training relative to that. And then the final piece is that certainly our administrators, not all of our administrators know, you know, how to go through those four-year plans and to make sure that, you know, they know how to read transcripts and to understand certainly the number of credits, but more specifically the nuances around the different types of diplomas. Some of our principals certainly know how to do that, but we need to dig down a little bit further and make sure assistant principals, and that even administrators who don't serve secondary students can begin scaffolding that work and beginning that to move up. So we have some additional planning and to be very strategic relative to our actions, but I would say those are two other things, because if we have all of those folks wrapping, we have the parents, we have administrators, we have, you know, the community even, and then students actually shifting from having the adults tell them and having them understand it, to students taking more ownership for their learning, and that's a shift that we definitely could make.
Yeah, I think that, and I've said this a number of times, you know, we as professionals have the information, but we don't do a good job in communicating that information to our parents, and I remember one former deputy superintendent of teaching and learning shared with us that if a ninth grader has, and President White, you may be able to help me with this, if a ninth grader has one credit and pass, one college credit and pass all of the five courses, the chances of them graduating from high school goes up tremendously. So that's the kind of information that I'm hoping that we're able to communicate with our parents, because that's when they become the kind of strategic partners and involve and inform parents and community that we need, but, you know, we tend to keep this information to our chests as professionals, and we've got to share this in order to make sure that, you know, we've got, you know, we've got, they're credible partners, you know, in terms of their education, because we've provided them with the information. So I'm looking forward to that conversation. I'll continue to be bringing that up. And is parent engagement going to be involved in this in some way?
Absolutely, as I was saying, we'll need to work with Khadija Mohammed and her team to make sure that this moves forward. So if you remember, a week or so ago, I spoke about a superintendent-parent engagement plan, and we taught, one of the areas is delivering professional development to our parents and caregivers, so this is absolutely a topic that should shift from being nice-to-know to a non-negotiable, and we can make sure that that's in the rotation.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, and thank you again, Crystal.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Don't forget to turn the mic off if you didn't, okay.
Thank you, Vice President Elliott. Commissioner Lebron?
President White, it looks like Dr. Jallow might have a question.
I'm sorry?
Question.
Oh, I was moving to the left. I'm sorry, I had said earlier I was going to go right to left. I didn't see you, Dr. Jallow. Commissioner Lebron, why don't you go ahead?
No, I don't have anything.
Oh, you don't have anything? Okay. You're set? I'm sorry, Dr. Jallow.
It's all right. Okay. So is Crystal still here? So this resolution is to make sure that summer school, kids that are in summer school are addressed, and kids that are new to the district get scheduled? Is that what this work is for?
Yes, it is, as well as preparing for the new school year. So in school counseling, we have a comprehensive school counseling plan for our scholars in grades K through 12, so it's also updating our plan as well as doing training around our plan so that they will be prepared for the new school year. Also, other training related to trauma, illness, and grief. As you all know, the things that have been occurring in our community, we want to make sure that our counselors are prepared to be able to support our students with their social-emotional needs as well. In addition to that, we have PSAT and SAT School Day that will be coming up on October 13th, so as part of that, we have to order and prepare for the PSAT/SAT in August.
So when will, in addition to all of that, when will schools be scheduled? Are schools already scheduled? Have they started scheduling? What percentage of the schools are scheduled, and in each school, what's the percentage of students that have a schedule ready to start in the fall?
So students, schools have not begun to schedule as of yet.
Can you repeat that?
Yes, schools have not begun to schedule yet.
No high school has a schedule yet.
So they have course requests completed. For our green students, it's just as easy as pressing a button to be sure that those students are scheduled, but for our yellow and red students who are in summer school, they have not been scheduled yet. We have to ensure that, one, the master schedule is completely done to be able to do scheduling for our scholars, two-
I want to be clear, the master schedule has not been done for any high school in RCS yet.
Are you asking that question?
Yes, I am.
So they are working on the master schedule, they are not completed, they are not totally completed, the registrars are working on that.
And so the other thing I just want to make sure, because we want to really understand, I want to really understand, say that your folks meet with these kids on a regular basis. I just happened to open up this book, and I see freshmen, freshmen in big trouble from this year in terms of the credits that they have not earned come sophomores. So if people are meeting multiple times throughout the year with these kids, why do we have so many children missing so many credits? All right, so somewhere there has to be a disconnect that we have to address that doesn't happen again, because that's a real serious issue for our children and for your school, because then you end up with this grade full of freshmen that just can't come out of freshman year. They just become what we call, we used to call them super freshmen, taking freshman classes. So hopefully, when you go back and look at your plans and assess what you're doing, you're looking at that as well.
Yes, we are, and we are really looking at the freshman academy model to make sure we have wraparound services for our ninth-grade students to ensure that they are able to earn those five credits. And again, our early warning system will help us as well, and then also in terms of summer school, the grades, once the grades are in, which is normally the second week in August, we'll know who passed and who we can move forward via scheduling.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to add, though, that I know that a lot of questions are going towards Crystal, but this is certainly a part of, I know Dr. Jallow and others know that, but I just want to make sure that our, those who are listening, or now or later, that this is, you know, a triangulated conversation between certainly our school registrars, between the school counselors, the principals, as well as the teaching and learning, but I just wanted to clarify that, that's all. Thank you.
An additional question or comment?
So when will the master schedule be available? And why isn't the master schedule available before now so that our students have a schedule? So where's the holdup or the barriers there?
So it's my understanding that it should be ready the second week in August. Those other questions I am unable to answer for you, because I do not oversee the master schedule.
Okay.
So that's something that has been historical, because, you know, my roots are in school counseling, and so we came- And so, we came in a little bit over the summer, but really very concentrated later in August and wanted is to certainly review the summer school results. So, I believe it's August 12th and 13th. Am I correct, Crystal, that the Regents exams and the summer school will be completed around that? But it has been that way for a long time. I think the other thing that's important, and we had this conversation briefly today, is we need to look at the registrars and work with Terry Ordin and that team to talk about just timing and some systems and structures. So, that's something, again, it's part of a larger conversation, and school counseling is one sliver certainly of that and the work that the school counselors do.
I don't mean to belabor this, but is this something that, can the master schedule be done around June? And the reason I say that, because I'm thinking about, we have a lot of our parents who move a lot. And so, if they're, if we can get them that schedule in June, then, you know, they're still in that same place. By the time, if we're talking about the middle of August, that the master schedule is going to be available, then there's another issue, because we may have our students and families who are moving around. So, they may not even get the schedule, you know? So, I just want to put that out there, because there are many pieces to this that we have to take into consideration. Thank you.
I think the issue with that, and that's something internally that we need to work on, because our course failure rate is higher than it actually should be. If we deliver a schedule in June, or say, early July, to a family that, and especially if they move, they're going to come expecting, oh, the district has said that I should be in English 10, you know, living environment, so on and so forth. When that's not actually the case, because they need to have passed one or more courses. I think the other thing that's important is, I think we're getting a little hung up on course requests being in, and as Crystal said, we could hit a button and those students who are the green students, so the students who have met those certain targets, we could print schedules for them certainly, but I don't, it doesn't make sense to do that for some while others who are labeled either yellow or red. So, I think one of the things that we need to do is certainly make sure that all of our commissioners understand that process and so they, you thoroughly understand. And I would like Crystal to come back to ESA to have that conversation, so they understand about comprehensive school counseling, the services that are delivered through the academic, the social, emotional, and the career realm. There's like a lot to this, and I think that's important.
And I'm glad you brought that up, because that's very important for us to understand. What are all of the pieces that are involved and associated with counseling? You know, so while I'm talking to you right now, I also understand that it's not only your department. There are other departments, but we certainly need to understand how all of that fits together, where the barriers may be, and how do we rectify that. Thank you.
Looking to see if there's any other questions. I do have sort of a question and a comment. When it comes to tracking students, you know, you often, my colleagues certainly have often heard me say, well, it gets measured, it gets done. So, if, and I think the superintendent just referenced this, if you literally pushed a button, could you tell me whether Joe Schmo at Franklin, let's say, School Without Walls, not School Without Walls, because they're a consortium school, school, soda, had, and he's a freshman, has five credits and one Regents exam, or he does not have five credits and one Regents? Literally, could you do that right now from a computer?
So, through our cohort tracking system, we can do that, but that's something that's done as a team. As I stated, we are working with our IT department to create an early warning system so that we can do that, where we'll be able to just view electronically to see Joe Schmo has five credits and one Regents.
So, as of today, there is no early warning system?
It's not completed as of today.
And this is a difficult question, but why wouldn't we have had, I mean, we've had this technology for decades, at least a decade. Why wouldn't we not have had, and I don't, how long have you been in your position? I'm not blaming this on you, but how long have you been in the position?
Yes, I've been here for two years.
Why is it that we don't have such a system?
So, this is something that we have been working on to get to this point, so that we'll be able to do that for our scholars. First, I needed to ensure that we have the cohort tracking model in schools first, so they understood and knew how to track the data and put in interventions for our students. And now, we're working to push it further with the early tracking model.
I just wanted to follow up. Oftentimes, and again, no fault or blame to previous administration or others who've been working, but the work of school counselors becomes critically important when Houston there is a problem. And so, a lot of school districts don't invest and focus on the work of school counselors and recognize certainly the significant impact that they can have on student achievement, aspiration, career goals, personal goals, et cetera. And if you remember, Dr. Jallow, in the academic report, has a section that specifically talks about things like professional development, making sure that there are comprehensive plans in place. So, a lot of districts, unfortunately, unless you have somebody who's really knowledgeable about that, it goes by the wayside. And so, take professional development, for example. It's like trying to put that square peg in the round hole, while we'll just, we'll make sure that counselors understand, you know, some of the same things that teachers do. They should understand, but there are some very definitive, there's very definitive training and information that they need to have that falls outside the realm of teaching. So, you know, we have that time, attention, and focus. You'll see some things coming out in late summer or fall. And again, I want us to, certainly, the focus and emphasis, we need to lean into teaching and learning, but counseling is an integral part of teaching and learning, and we often haven't seen that. We've looked at it as an ancillary service rather than aligned in an integral part of the academic framework.
You know, I just, I want to note that I get all that, but it's the same level of, this is not a reflection of this administration, the same level of incompetence that just had us in 2006, not having a centralized understanding of whether a child was going to, our children were going to graduate in June, and it was January of 2007. They're just, professional development is certainly needed, but there really is no excuse in 2021 for us to not have an early warning system tracking, because this stuff isn't something that I made up, the five credits and the one credit. There's just, and my comments are not directed to you, but I just want the public to know, we're in this spot. It's not because of lack of professional development, but a lack of common sense. This isn't rocket science insofar as it involves readily available and accessible technology that's been available for at least the last decade. So, when you say respectfully, we're working on it, you can't work fast enough. You really can't. You're making up for lost time from your predecessors, right? But this system should be in place tomorrow, tomorrow. And I'm not, I'm not saying that the professional development that our superintendent has referenced is not necessary, absolutely. But part of the challenge of urban counselors is that often, and I know many myself, they're overwhelmed, that they're focusing on those students with special needs. That's why technology allows you all to be more efficient and more effective. You don't have to have, you can reduce your caseload, because you got a computer warning you that a student is falling behind eighth ball. So, at the next ESA meeting, I will be asking, when is this system going to be complete? Because you can't tell me that professional development can make up for the efficiencies of this type of readily accessible and available technology. It's available to us. And the fact that it is 2021 and it is being developed explains to me why this year, the superintendent and I talked about this this morning, that for the first time in probably more than eight years, our graduation rate went down. I think that's one of the reasons. I think it's, there's a combination of reasons. But had we had access to tracking these students four years ago, the people who are seniors now, if we had began tracking them in eighth grade and had that early warning system, not withstand the fact that we had COVID and a whole host of other challenges, we'd have been on the game four years ago. You see what I'm saying? So, again, I don't, I don't want you to personalize these comments. It's more of a commentary on a system that in 2021, we're just developing an early warning system that actually is quite simple. Five credits, one Regents.
Could I just interject, because this is being directed at Crystal, even though I know it's not personal? I would respectfully ask, direct it to me, because she's a part of it.
Sure, that's fair.
Okay?
That's absolutely fair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Nice job, Crystal. Thank you again.
I know, I was hard, so I had to do that clap. I had to clap. I was hardcore.
Are there any other questions or comments regarding Resolution 64? Yes, Commissioner Adams?
I just, I'm listening about technology and all that. I was in a school for a couple hours today, and there's no technology could give an early warning on some of the things that I heard today. One student was hoping to have a button to turn off her humanity so that she could move on with her work, because it was just, she had a distraction in her life going on. Two students in the same school building were put out of their homes. Two different students, two different households. Another student came in, was, had been arguing with his mom, and so, he couldn't even focus on learning today. The technology cannot track that. We have to have them counselors in there, we have to have them bodies in there to actually talk to these people, to discover and document, then you can track. But in the meantime, people are falling to the wayside. It's, so we can't depend on, I just, I just think it's important that we know, technology alone is not the answer, man. We have to have them bodies up in there to hear, let them children ventilate and get some of that off, so they can move on with their lives. This all was in one, it was just crazy today. I was there for two hours, two hours. And that's too many, that's too many serious stories I had to hear. It should not have been that much. I shouldn't hear that much in a week. And with that, that's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, and let me just be clear, Commissioner Adams, I agree with you 101%. And I hope no one misconstrues my comments. It is a supplement to real-life, face-to-face interactions that people have with students. When we see children graduate and when we see them in schools, we see what they have to overcome, and a computer can't get to that. But if we want to help these counselors be successful, we've got to give them access to the modern technology that allows them to do that. Thank you, Commissioner Adams. All right. Any other questions or comments regarding Resolution Number 64, Commissioner Malloy?
Yes, this is just for Ms. Briggs. It's about the PhotoVoice grant. My question is just of the additional pay for this. If you could just explain the grant or where it came from?
Greetings, everyone. Hi. The PhotoVoice project was something that was in partnership with Rochester City School District and Rock the Future. And it is a project where our students will become catalysts for change. And what we wanted to do in this project was do everything outside the box. So, what we have are PhotoVoice mentors. So, these mentors will work with our students exclusively to help and guide them along the way. We know that with our youth, they've gone through a lot. Everyone has, but especially our children. So, we want to use this project to document their lives, to see through their lives, but to hear their voices. So, these mentors will serve as coaches to our students. So, we're going to have 30 students in the program. And so, each mentor will have five to six students. They're going to meet with them, work on training them on speaking skills, and we're going to have entrepreneurs come in and work with the students, but they're also going to go into their communities with the students. Because a lot of times, we find that, you know, we talk about our community, but we don't really go out in the community. So, all these people have been dedicated, because from day one, I talked to them about, we got to get out into the community. I get out into the community. So, it's not just, I'm saying it, I do it. So, we all going to do it. So, that's a big part of this particular project. And it's been done across the country, and it has proven to really bring light to what our kids go through. But we also want our students to be able to make change in their communities. So, each week, they'll have a question they have to answer. So, week one is, what do you like about your community? What do you want to improve? So, when we talk about improving, we want to go a step further. What's your improvement plan? So, we're going to guide them and help them to develop a plan, and then see who do we need to put them in front of to discuss their plan. So, those are the types of things that we want to do with our students. Then, long haul, we want our students to be able to provide professional learning to students, to teachers, to administrators, to their parents, to the community, where the students start to tell us about themselves and what they would like to see happen. So, that's what we want PhotoVoice to become. What we also want to do is provide different areas where our students can present their photos at. So, again, what they'll do is they'll take photos. We have a professional photographer that will work with the students, teach them all types of techniques. They'll write narratives about their pictures. Every Friday, we're going to have a mini showcase, and we will be inviting you all to come. But at the end of the program, we want to have huge showcases. So, we're looking for different venues that will allow our students to come in and show their work, but we want our students, again, to be talking to people, to curate, to talk about their work, to talk about, you know, what they took pictures of. We also have Entrepreneurship Week. During that week, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to bring in businesses from their communities. So, the first day of the program, the first week of the program, we're going to dedicate a lot of time to asset mapping, because we want our students to highlight what's in their communities. And we want to bring those people from their communities, bring them into the fold, learn from them. So, again, we're stealing that change in our students, where they become catalysts for change. So, that's it, you know, basically in a nutshell, PhotoVoice.
And when is the expected, when's the end date for the program?
So, we're looking to end with the showcases in October. So, we want to also, you know, highlight Hispanic Heritage Month. And so, we want to go, the first one, we'd like to be at La Marquesa International Plaza. And then, we want to go to different, like I said, locations across the city every Saturday in October, where we have different showcases.
So, the funds that were grant, the grant funds from tonight, that's going to help continue that work into October then?
Yes.
And these are all, where did the grants come from?
The grants come from, you know, the money that we have from ESL.
Okay.
That will cover, you know, the PhotoVoice mentors, their salaries for the program.
So, this was in addition to what we approved back in, was it May or June?
Yes. No, this is, this is all part of that.
Okay.
That comes out of that.
Fantastic, thank you.
So, what you approved back in May was, now, this is the actual delineation of said funds?
Fantastic, thank you.
Commissioner Lebron?
Well, first of all, I want to thank ESL again for the funds to be able to do this. But second of all, thank you, Kelly, and thank you to the team that's putting this together. We did have some City of Rochester residents also do a PhotoVoice project for Common Ground Health to highlight neighborhoods and children's accessibility for play. And I do think it is a powerful tool to allow people from their perspective to show what they see day to day, both in their homes, around their homes. And you're right, a lot of people don't live in the neighborhood. Even people on here who are living in the City of Rochester, that is still not the core of where our city, where our students live at. And I know that, because I live on Post Internet, and I say this all the time, I am not in a posh part of the City of Rochester, and I'm okay with that. But it is a harsh reality that our kids do have to walk out into. Like, I literally, last summer, there was a kid, I think he was, there was a 16-year-old kid this, like a month ago, shot on Post Avenue, right in close to School 16, right down the street from me. And last year, also a teenager robbed that gunpoint in front of my house. So, these are the realities that our kids are living, but there are also wonderful pockets in the 19th ward that are walkable and accessible. And so, it's a collective mix, but I'm so curious to see the students' creations and what they will bring to this and help educate other adults about the realities of the City of Rochester, because this is an issue that we have brought up. The school district cannot solve the issues of the City of Rochester. The school district cannot solve the issues of the City of Rochester, but certainly we can support our students who also live in it and support our partners in City Hall. But it's not our responsibility, but we can all work together to figure something out to support our kids. So I think this is an avenue for them to express those things, and I'm very grateful for you all to think in this way. It's a very creative way for them to address these issues, but also to give them a lot of hope, and like you said, asset mapping for them so that they can see the wonderful things that are around them as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Clark?
Thank you. I do think this is a wonderful project, and my question is, how will the 30 students be selected? Are they going to work with counselors? What type of selection process are you going to use to identify the students that are going to be a part of this project? And also, you indicated it was based on best practice from other communities? And just an overview of what the outcomes on those communities were?
Well, to your first question, what we did, we wanted to select from every high school. So we gave every high school a chance to, you know, select students. And as we did that, you know, we just pulled students from every high school. We wanted to make sure that everyone was represented, all of our secondary schools. So that's the selection process. In a lot of other cities where this program has been, this project actually has been conducted, again, it brings that attention to that student voice, but it also allows our students to become leaders, to be able to speak in front of whoever comes their way, to be able to talk about their communities and see it through their eyes. You know, a lot of times, we see it through adult eyes, but this time, we're going to see it through student eyes and hear their voice. So that's the number-one impact with that. And again, we hope with that, with hearing and seeing the students' voice, seeing their photography, that we can also use that in our instruction and everything we do, that we can infuse it throughout that. And it's also in alignment with our strategic plan about building a strong community. You know, the students are part of that community, so we want to get that input in there as well, too.
I just wanted to add with what Ms. Briggs said. One, the 30 students, as she said, were selected. They needed to be economically disadvantaged because Rochester Works funded the salary. So that didn't, that's another generous donation that we received. We were able to run the paying of salaries through Rochester Works. And then the second piece, one important component of Photo Voice is that it empowers students. We don't empower them. I don't believe we, anyone can empower someone else. You can only empower yourself. So our scholars will empower themselves to be able, we can use this in advocacy, in late winter when we go to Albany, and we can say that this information directly and definitively comes from our scholars. This takes focus groups or to a whole other level where, again, students are empowered, they empower themselves to be able to go out and lift their voices up.
Any other questions or comments regarding Resolution Number 64? We're all set. Thank you. Let's go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of Resolution 64 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sees Madam Clerk, the ayes have it. Before I turn the gavel back over to Commissioner Malloy for the governance meeting, I did want to take care of some procedural matters. Commissioner Powell has indicated to me, and I believe she had given her colleagues advance notice that she was going to be on vacation and was not going to be available for today's meeting. I have to apologize to my colleagues. Some time ago, I did connect with the Director of our Human Resources and exchanged some emails regarding what standards the district uses to the absences. I have not gotten around to generating that memo to you all, although I've sent many memos to you all in the interim. I'm still working on it, but I am obligated under our rules and bylaws to address Commissioner Powell's absence. I do want to reiterate in making this recommendation this evening that there's a number of factors that, as Board President, that I take into account. I've previously addressed the fact that I find absences excusable when our board meetings happen to conflict with other work obligations. My belief is that we, as board members, add value to our work when we have other work-related experiences. So oftentimes, members on the dais right now have had work conflicts, and I have said that I find those absences excusable. And for those of you who don't know, if you miss three meetings in a row as a board member, it could cause you problems under our bylaws. So I'm charged with the responsibility of making a recommendation to the board. I also note that there are board obligations. You know, many of us go to conferences, and of course, those would be clearly excusable. Of course, illness would excuse, and that's happened to a number of members on this dais, that people are not feeling well, and so I find those excusable. This is a different one. This is vacations. My belief is that this is difficult work, and during the course of doing it, you do need a respite sometime away, just like with any job. District employees are allowed to take vacation. If it got to the point where a board member was taking consecutive vacations during the course of board meetings, I would take a different position. But in this instance, I find that vacations, and for this particular meeting, is an acceptable and excusable absence. And so I look, as I'm required to, to the board, to see if there's any objection to my determination. I'm looking to Steve to make sure I got this right. Is there any objection to my conclusion that Commissioner Powell's absence on the occasion by her vacation is a legitimate excuse? I don't see any objection to that determination, so that will be, what will be noted on the record. Then finally, I just wanted to note the presence of James Patterson, who was a successful primary candidate for the position of school board. He still has an election to endure come November, but I wanted to say to you, Mr. Patterson, on behalf of the Board of Education, thank you for taking the time out of your schedule to be here tonight. I noticed that you were here the other night, and I know the citizens appreciate that. With that having been said, I turn the gavel back over to Commissioner Malloy.
Thank you, President White. So our remaining discussion items should go fairly quickly, knock on wood. Our first discussion item is just information regarding our upcoming board retreat. As you know, and just to let the public know, we have an annual retreat that we do as a board with the superintendent, and it's there that we're able to not only eventually do our board's self-evaluation, but we also look at the strategic plan and goals for, and board goals, create board goals, and update our goals as a board. So in terms of that, you've been provided with, that's going to take place Thursday and Friday of this week. On Thursday, we're going to go through the agenda in just a moment. On Thursday, we're going to be together between 10 and 3, and then on Friday, no, 10 and 5, my bad. And then on Friday, we'll be together between 10 and 3. So we have a number of events planned during that time. You've been provided with binders from the superintendent and her staff relating to the data that we're going to be analyzing for, during our retreat. It should be noted that East High School also has data for us. It is ready, but we're going to get that tomorrow. Superintendent Nelms has been on vacation and has just arrived home today, so we will pre-provided with that tomorrow so that we have ample time to review it prior, leading up to the retreat. So with that being said, I just wanted to have, Kellya is going to walk us through, or Mr. Kirk is going to walk us through just our agenda for those two days. Thank you.
Sure. And our superintendent, if you want to jump in as well, we're just, you know. So the two days are organized in terms of a reflection of the 2020, 2021 year, and then the next day is a look forward to planning for the 2021, 2022 year. So this first day is a year in review, that's on Thursday, and as Commissioner Malloy stated, we are there from 10 until 5. We will start with a review of the district's strategic plan, and then we'll go into an academic review of what took place for East EPO as well as the district. Both superintendents will be providing data on that. Then we'll also do a financial review of the 2020, 2021 year, and our CFO, Pierce, will be leading us through that. Our graduation rates review will also be, will also be conducted with Superintendent Nelms, and I believe Director Ollman will be representing the district's graduation rates. That has been a big question for quite some time. Every year, we review the graduation rate, so that will be very interesting to discuss.
So just, since we're focusing on Day 1, which is, again, a look back or the year in review, you have binders that are divided by assessment data at the 3 through, at the 3 through 8 level, Regents exam, AP, Advanced Placement, International Baccalaureate, Graduation, et cetera. Just to orient you to the binder, you have an executive summary or an analysis on the top. It includes background information, the student profile, so the numbers of scholars taking the assessment, or the number of scholars in the data set, and then there are key findings, so that's an analysis of the data. And then behind it, it's the data so you can do your own analysis and to review. So the goal is to have really robust conversations. And just to note again, so those who are watching either live or later, we have some data that we are not able to share. So for example, 3 through 8 ELA and math data, we don't have that yet back from the New York State Department of Education. We can talk about the numbers of scholars who participated, but we are awaiting additional information from the department. We can report on our projected June graduation rate. That has to be officially certified, but we also have scholars who are working to complete the graduation requirements and become August graduates as well. So we explain all of that in the binder, so it is by section, so you can review that. And certainly, we will, the goal is to just begin those conversations for that look back, but additional information will be woven into ESA committee meetings or other committee meetings as appropriate.
Thank you, and we want to thank our superintendent for providing this data very well-organized. The board retreats, but this is our first retreat in several, several years where we're able to look at data, and this day will be facilitated by our state monitor, Dr. Jallow.
Commissioner LeBron?
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple of things. I am going to make a request that we don't have two days during the work week because I work and I have to take PTO for this, and there are two meetings I was not able to reschedule. And just looking back at all of my colleagues, a lot of you may be retired or like work for yourselves or working from home, or whatever the case may be. I just want to put it out there that I still work full-time, and so it's a little bit challenging to do a Thursday and a Friday. And in the past, when we have had board retreats, they have also taken place on a Saturday, which I'm willing to do, to do that on a Saturday. So I just want to note that for the future. Don't plan two-days retreats if you anticipate working folks. I know that we have another commissioner joining us, Ms. Camille Simmons, who's also going to be on the ballot and also has been watching meetings, and I do anticipate that she is trying to adapt her work schedule to also be there, but, and I just want to say that. So I will be there. I actually anticipate to have to arrive to East by 8:30 so that I can log into my first meeting until you all get there, because I won't have enough transition time from that meeting to travel to you all at East. And then on top of that, I do have to step out for an hour for another meeting that I was not able to reschedule. And I don't want to be in those positions. It's not fair to you all, it's not fair to the district, it's not fair to my other colleagues who are also anticipating that I'm going to be fully present for the conversations that we need to have. So that's my request. I do appreciate the data coming. It's Tuesday, I have a few days to read it, and y'all know I like a week minimum to read data, but I will take it in a few days. So I just want to put that out there, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner LeBron. Is there, are there any other questions? I see other mics on. Vice President Elliott, did you have a question? Are there any other questions?
Not for Thursday, not for Thursday.
Okay. Okay. Any questions regarding the Friday agenda? Well, we're going to get to the Friday.
Yeah, so I was going to go to the Friday. So Friday is the, is a look forward to the following academic year, and we will have a working breakfast where we will discuss racial bias training, which is something that is in development as part of the academic plan. And then we will be focusing on goal-setting and vision-setting for the board and the superintendents as we look to the next academic year. We're going to receive an enrollment update regarding our students, as well as looking at how we achieve the action items in the fiscal and academic plans for the next year. Finally, we will close with some board housekeeping. There are several things that need to be decided with regard to the board's departmental budget, travel, and master calendar, so those things will take place during that time.
Looks like we have some questions. Vice President Elliott?
Yeah, just that, Commissioner, I think we have to, and we have not done this well. We sort of had these schedules and we've sort of, you know, had, you know, all laid out, but I think that there probably needs to be, maybe not this particular meeting, but there probably needs to be some time where we can just brainstorm and discuss, you know, just informal kind of conversation. You know, one of the things I mentioned to the superintendent, I mentioned to you in a meeting that we had, that there is now a real push on climate change and the jobs that may be available in climate change and how we need to position our students to be able to, you know, take, take advantage of those opportunities. And so, you know, just conversation about where we each are in terms of education in the Rochester City School District and what we see that we do well, what we need to be doing in the future, you know, what have been some of our weaknesses. If we could sort of just have, you know, and maybe not for this time, but at some point, have some conversation around just having some informal conversation. And I tend to think that when you have that kind of informal conversation, it gives us an opportunity to know, to begin to plan where we need to be going in the future. So, and make us strong as a board and make us strong as a district. So maybe not this time, but at some point, you know, I'm looking that included on the agenda is that we have that kind of time to have that kind of informal conversation.
Thank you, Vice President.
Can I just address that really quickly, if you don't mind? So I heard, I got the notes from that meeting, sorry, I wasn't able to attend, but you, I think you will find the icebreaker activity as well as the working lunch, we will have some informal conversations framed around, around just, you know, doing a brainstorm.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Commissioner LeBron?
Yeah, just for clarity purposes, because you mentioned that we're going to be talking about our budget, and those are public conversations, so are we going to be making that portion of the retreat public?
So that, so that part of the conversation, I believe we were, we were doing it as a work session because some of those, they're not, we're not deciding anything. Those are just things I need to express or have people sign up so I know how to go with signing people up for travel and other events. So it really is a working session. I'm going to call on Acting General Counsel to...
In the past, so Steve, before you give an answer, I just want to note that in the past, those conversations have taken place from the dais in terms of our budget, the travel for each commissioner. Those are public conversations, and by law, we're required to have them publicly, but I get, I get that we're not making decisions, but we have had conversations from the dais and didn't make decisions that day either.
Yeah, I mean, you're correct. To the extent that there's any deliberation about the board's budget expenditures, things like that, those do need to be taken, taken place in an open meeting format. You know, I don't know what the layout exactly of what we're talking about is going to be, but...
So we won't really be going into the dollars and cents of things. It really is just to share the calendars from our various participating agencies, so Monroe Colony, NISBA, those, to share with you the calendars, and then to start getting an idea of who will be participating so that the board staff can start planning out what to anticipate. Of course, whatever decisions are going to be presented or any proposals regarding that, any decisions will come before the Governance Committee, but this is just to get us started because we don't have a way to anticipate costs in the future, and that's just a matter of who's going to sign up to go to things.
For clarity, there was a period where we decided that commissioners would, the money would be split... would be split equally among commissioners, and that if those who, for example, didn't attend as many conferences or didn't want to, they can allocate it to another commissioner.
I don't think this activity will take into consideration that particular thing at that time, because that decision is still something that is on the governance agenda to address, like how will it be divvied up? But this is just a matter of signing up for events. Like, I want to go to NISBA in the fall, I want to go to this. And that way, we'll be able to see how much the funding will cost, so I can come back to you with data on, you know, how things will need to look for the budget, if we're going to achieve the things that people sign up for.
Okay, thank you.
If I can just interject something to maybe alleviate any concerns that Commissioner LeBron seems to have. I'm going to make sure, although our next governance meeting isn't until January, I will make sure that we have special items presented to the board at some point in the fall, so at a special meeting, so that we can have that discussion, because I agree, those need to take place locally.
And I just make a request, too. I mean, these are conversations that we actually should have finalized before we pass the budget that started July 1st, because January, we're almost halfway through the budget year. It's almost, actually, bad financial management from the board that this is how we're deciding our own budget and our travel midway through the end of the budget year. So I think in the future, we actually have to figure out, although the conferences, I get, don't come out in advance, we do have to figure out who's going to what conferences or who's interested, if there are conferences they went to before, and that needs to be properly planned and budgeted. I see you shaking your head, no, Board Clerk, but I do, I know that we have a budget that we passed, and we have also gone over our own budget. We've been there two years in a row. So I just want to put that out there, remind folks, yes, we passed the budget for the board, the board overspent in their own budget. We can also be better financial stewards, especially given our financial history and the conditions that we're still in. We're not out of the clear because we're getting this money, so I just want to put that out there, too.
President White?
Not to relitigate old issues, but it was thoroughly discussed. This reference to us being over our budget is a reference to us having to hire distinguished educator, hiring superintendent, interim superintendent, putting them up in a hotel, but I don't want to relitigate that. I do think it's important, though, to recognize that our current budget has baked into it travel. And during the course of the year, we'll have to figure out how that money is to be allocated. Not that we're not doing what we're supposed to do. Set aside money for travel, we'll make decisions about how that money will be spent at the appropriate time, when we know what people's obligations are, what we know what they want to do. That's totally appropriate and totally consistent with our fiduciary responsibility. Have a budget for travel, we'll allocate it at whatever meeting, the retreat or at some other meeting.
Thank you, President White.
Commissioner Malloy, I just want to respond. So it wasn't just Dr. Kino's salary, there were other factors that came out in the audit, too. However, we also just did a budget amendment for the board budget to have an additional part-time person. So yes, yes, we planned for travel. We also had a meeting where we made some decisions to transfer some dollars from certain budget lines. And again, those things need to be had publicly so that they're not happening behind closed doors. So if we are only discussing interest in people going to conferences and not the details of the budget, and bringing those decisions back to the public conversation, I'm okay with that. If it starts to go into a direction where I feel like it is a public conversation by law, we are required to have these things, then, one, I will walk out, but, two, I will also go live if I have to, to share with the public. Don't want to be in that position.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
So I just wanted to definitely reassure the board that board staff is working to make sure that we stay within the budget lines. I have a couple of conversations with CFO Pierce regarding that. We really want to make sure that we are doing our own due diligence with the planning. I've also touched base on that with our superintendent to make sure that, you know, there is going to be a budget freeze, and that whatever conferences and things are encumbered before the budget freeze has taken place. So we will not be going over budget lines. It's just a matter of, we have to have a starting place to understand who will be going so that, and to share also the price of going to some of these things, so that people have an understanding of, you know, what to sign up for. Additionally, with regard to new positions or anything that is happening within the budget, that is already budgeted for. It is budgeted for and will not take us over our budget lines, because the budget lines that are associated for staffing is different from our PD. So just want to clarify that as well.
Do you want an amendment made? You didn't budget for that. You need an amendment to the budget.
Yes, yes, but for lines that had not been, that were not budgeted to be used in this current school year. So I think you'll find, once, any, just once we have a general sense of what will happen with the events, then we'll come back to a special meeting, governance will convene within another committee, and then we will be able to provide you with an update on the numbers at that point.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are you going to continue with day two of the retreat?
Yes, well, after the housekeeping session, that will be the end of our retreat. We will work to do, have a weekday and a weekend next time. I think this particular August, we were originally planning to do an event with OPE on a Saturday this month. That has subsequently been canceled, but we didn't want to have two Saturday dates for commissioners, so that's why it was originally planned for two days in the week. But next time, we'll do better with our planning to ensure that it's not two workdays.
Thank you. Vice President?
Oftentimes, when we have these retreats, we just forget about them after we've had them. I think there needs to be some follow-up to the retreats. I don't know exactly what that looks like, but we shouldn't just have a retreat and then that's it. You know, oftentimes, we tend to forget about what we discussed in those meetings. So I share that for your consideration, Madam Chair.
I have one point to that. I think Superintendent Myers was nodding her head, because as we were talking about this, it was brought up that there's some data that comes out later in the fall. And so I think Deputy Superintendent Morris had mentioned wanting to touch base and having a second part retreat perhaps in the fall around October. And so we are looking at that and seeing where we will come back and do like, so you'll get the first cap in August, and then you have an end cap in October to kind of join you with the data that becomes available after such time.
So will we note after the retreat? Will we record the end cap in the fall?
Yes, yes, we have a note taker and everything.
Fantastic. Any other questions regarding the retreat? Go ahead, Commissioner Adams.
So I'm just making notice that I will not be here on Friday till 11:00. I will miss the visioning. I have a commitment, attend the school for Showcase, and I'm going there. So I looked at this, I needed to look at the schedule, and I feel okay with coming in here and missing a little bit of that, because we may not even get started on time. But I need to be at the Showcase to be at Number 10 School on Friday.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, well, that brings us to our next agenda item, which is regarding the Monroe County School Boards Association Committee assignments. You were sent an email, I think, a bit earlier in the week regarding this, and Callie is just going to walk us through the explanation of what these positions are. Because of COVID, we didn't have assignments last year, so this will be the first year that we're really assigning people, or asking for volunteers for these various committees. So, Madam Clerk.
Oops, sorry about that. So the Monroe County School Boards Association is one of the participating organizations that the board has been working with for several years. I wanted to point out that Vice President Elliott has been attending those meetings with regularity and has kind of bounced around through these committees, but this is the first time that I've been working with them to assign people from the board to their committees, so this is very exciting. They have three committees that meet once per month, and so I wanted to be able to provide names to them. They have a legislative committee that meets to plan their legislative breakfast and to lobby in Albany with our legislators. And it really is the culmination of all the different districts in Monroe County coming together to lobby for different, for shared interests. Their Labor Relations Committee deals with the unions and shared concerns. I don't know if Vice President Elliott might want to touch base a little bit on that, she's been attending those meetings. She has a very specific interest in relation to this, so we need a person to sign up for that one. And then there's the Information Exchange Committee, which really is a general kind of patchwork for all school district leaders to share what is going on in their district and to gain and navigate what's going on with the school districts across our county during that time. So for anyone who is interested in these committees, I know Commissioner Malloy is going to now find out who has interest.
So just to start with maybe the Legislative Committee, do we have any commissioners who would like to serve on the Legislative Committee? I know for Adams, you had kind of raised your hand a little bit. Were you interested in that one? I'm also interested in serving on the Legislative Committee. All right, in terms of, can we have more than two, or is it just two per?
They just gave me two lines per one, but I was told that you can attend, you can attend any of the meetings, but the representative is just two.
Okay. Anyone interested in the Labor Relations? Vice President Elliott, did you want to continue on with that? And you as well, Commissioner LeBron?
Yep.
Thank you. And then finally, the Information Exchange. Commissioner Clark, are you interested in that one?
Actually, I had a question. Because we have two incoming board members, I think, can we give them an opportunity to serve on these? Because for me rotating off the end of December, it wouldn't, really wouldn't make sense for me to serve on a committee.
Some of them, though, Commissioner Clark, aren't fluid, so, and sometimes commissioners or board members can't attend, so Information Exchange, for example, they might talk about bullying on the internet, they might talk about cultural race theory. I mean, so it's not connected. You don't necessarily have to attend all of them. It's not fluid, just as an FYI.
So if I volunteered for one of the committees, and when I rotate off, my replacement would be able to replace me as a, then I'll volunteer for the Information Exchange.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have another volunteer for the Information Committee?
What is the Information Exchange Committee? What is it? Just changing information, basically?
It's basically to provide professional developments to specific and contemporary One of the things, I just, I have to add this, though, the committees and the information and the development of board members are critical, and superintendents are encouraged to attend. But one of the things that I continue to push, and I will reach out to the team, is that it is predominantly suburban school districts, and rarely does Rochester. We've done some presentations, like Glenn has presented, and some others, but I think it's important that the urban, the city school district perspective. So I will just send a reminder that that is important, because representation does matter. And so that's just something that I just wanted to put out there, that I'll be following up on that, because it usually is just the suburban districts. We're one of 21, right? But I, we have a lot of great folks in the Rochester City School District who have a particular set of skills that I think are important, and so I just wanted to put that on record.
Madam Superintendent, you don't even have to worry about that. The urban voice is recognized there, so just want to make sure that we understand that. It is recognized. And they have been, I would also say that they have been very receptive of the urban voice, and it's much appreciated.
Thank you, Vice President Elliott. And thank you, Superintendent. So any other volunteers for the Information Exchange? One other volunteer, President White, perhaps?
I know that the Vice President...
The President usually attends the President's.
Yeah, they have a President's meeting.
He has two presidents.
Executives, right.
Well, I think, maybe I'll reach out to Commissioner Powell to see if she is interested in that.
Yes, yes.
But I don't want to speak for her here, so maybe once she comes back from vacation, we have a little time.
We have a little time, yeah.
All right. Wonderful. Well, thank you, commissioners, and thank you, Superintendent. Oh, go ahead.
Just sort of piggybacking on what Vice President Elliott said and what the superintendent said. While I think there's some eagerness to hear what the perspective is of urban school leaders, there's a great deal of naivety or ignorance about what is happening in urban districts. And quite frankly, sometimes I've noticed, because they have their own agendas and their own concerns, they'd rather sometimes not look at those issues. You know, Vice President and the superintendent were at a meeting where we were talking directly about the issues of race, racism, and I just think in their life experience, sometimes they don't get it. So all the more reason why we should be present at those meetings.
Thank you so much, President White. All right, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is just a very quick update reminder on the board's self-evaluation. The self-evaluation tool needs to be filled out on board docs, I'm sorry, on SuperEVAL. So if you log into SuperEVAL, you have through August 9th to complete the self-evaluation. I'm going to be sending a reminder email out during our retreat, right at the end of our retreat, and also following the retreat. So I'll keep sending these reminder emails out, but please make sure you have it in by August 9th so that the data can be compiled. And that's it for the board's self-evaluation. Finally, on our agenda tonight, just, we're going to be discussing two issues relating to the onboarding or new member orientation. We are well underway, already welcoming our two presumed commissioners-elect, and so we've had initial reach-outs with them, other meetings, we've provided them with calendars. You know, they have access to the bylaws, our code of conduct. We've also provided them access and how to access items on our website, board docs. We've talked about how we will not be printing out items for commissioners, but rather, we're going to be sticking to a green initiative and having, showing them exactly how they can access items directly from our website. But as a board, I think we need to establish a few protocols about welcoming our two new board members. Which meetings are we going to allow them to attend? Conversation? Will they be attending certain executive sessions? So I think as a board, we need to have a discussion quickly around what people are comfortable with, and maybe I'll just start from that end of the dais. Commissioner Clark, do you have anything to say?
Yes, I would say absolutely, we need to invite the new board members to all of the board meetings and all of the discussions, because the learning curve is just so huge, and to have someone come in on January 1st cold, you know, it would be a disservice to the students and a disservice to you guys and to the community. So my vote would be to invite them in and to, the executive session, I'm not sure if we're going to run into any legal issues there, but at a bare minimum, I think they should be receiving what we receive.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Commissioner LeBron?
So I also would like for Vice President Elliott to chime in, but we already had this discussion. One, per our own policy, we don't allow board members who are not board members-elect, and legally, nobody is a board member-elect till the general election, which doesn't happen till November. So Commissioner Powell actually brought it up last week when she brought up the entire policy. So this board already discussed, our meetings are public, folks have access, they can come sit in the room, they can watch it on Facebook, like our other commissioner joining us is doing right now. But as far as executive session, and our superintendent has expressed, along with other board members, again, I'll let Vice President speak around this, is the executive session issue around confidentiality. They're not sworn in, so there's no consequences that can be had, and this is actually not a practice common in other school districts, it's something that was started here. Well, I don't want to say started here, because that will make a generalization that no other school district has done it. But the Big Fives typically don't, they wait till folks are commissioner-elect, which again, does not happen till November. You can come back, Vice President Elliott, we're talking about the same thing we talked about last week, about allowing commissioner-elect and so forth to come into meetings and when. about last week, about allowing commissioner-elect and so forth to come into meetings and when. But you're right, for the most part, we went through the policy. So the clerk is responsible for some of the onboarding, as is the president. Per our own policy, we voted on that policy to keep it as is. And yeah, that's where we're at. But also, I do share concerns about the confidentiality. And we went into an in-depth conversation that the votes, voting used to actually happen in September, and then the general election was shortly right after November. And when the law changed and the primary was moved to the summer, yeah, it allows for a wider gap. But I'll repeat what I said last week, too. If people are running for school board for the Rochester City School District or any other urban school district and they're not prepared, that's not on us. And also, you know, the citizens have a right to know who's coming into these roles prepared when they get here. But in hindsight, even after that last week's conversation, all of our information is public information. Like, they can go and research it on our website, that's literally where you can get everything. Google is a tool that also works. But certainly, our meetings are public and they're more than welcome to come to public meetings, as is anybody from the general public. So I'm not voting on this because it's our own policy that we don't allow it and this discussion already happened, but I'll let Commissioner Vice President Elliott go.
If I could just interject here as Chair, my understanding that we did not finish the conversation surrounding this, that we never finished the conversation. We began discussion on it. It's also my understanding that in our bylaws, there's, it's open to interpretation regarding executive session and that we can invite whomever we want as a board. It says that right in the policy, that we can invite people to executive sessions. In fact, Ricardo and I, when we first came on the board, we were invited to particular executive sessions, especially when we were hiring the district clerk, someone that we were going to be working with. And so we were privy to that information. There were some executive sessions that we were asked to step out of. When there was a budget crisis, we were allowed into those executive sessions as well so that we could be informed of the impending budget crisis as well. So there were many examples of, as commissioners-elect, even prior to the general election, where we were invited in to those sessions. So I think that we need to keep that in mind and our policy itself says that we can invite in, or anyone that we want.
Yeah, but, so you're talking about our bylaws. Our policy actually says that, it talks about the onboarding process essentially for Commissioner Lex, which again, doesn't happen. I understand that we did it. It's not a practice that I support it, so I just want to put that out there. But also, it's also, we do have to take into account our superintendent's comfort level with it and previous superintendent didn't care. They felt like, yeah, when it was a budget crisis, these folks are coming in, I would like to invite them for the budget conversation. But I just want to put it out there that that's not a practice that's common in other school districts and it's a liability to us as well as a district. We have no way to hold anybody accountable if information is shared outside of executive session. We can't even hold executive session information amongst ourselves here and we're elected and sworn. So I just want to put that out there, too. However, I do want to support our superintendent's comfort level around it and I understand. And it's also something, because it's not practiced at other districts, you won't, you know, Superintendent Terry Dade last year was also new. This was his first superintendent seat in a large school district and I think he made the assumption that there were certain board members making that pressure, that that is something, a standard practice, and it's not.
Vice President Elliott, go ahead.
Yeah, I still stand by my comments from last week. I just think that we have to keep this as, in my mind, as official as possible. And there is such a gap between now and November. You know, my position is, is that, you know, we don't know what may happen. And there's a risk that's involved when you have candidates who've been elected, but not officially, that may pose some risk. And that's what, you know, I'm concerned about, that there may be some risk. We may even be putting them in a position that there may be, and I can't tell you exactly what, but that there may be something that may come up, that may put them at risk and also put us at risk. And so, and while we supported it previously, in hindsight, I probably should have said no. I probably should have said no. I just don't want to put them at risk, nor do I want to put us at risk. And also, you know, the media gets a hold of this and, you know, they, you know, we've got people in there who are not officially school board members and I just don't want to take that chance. Thank you.
President White?
Thank you, Commissioner Malloy. A couple of things, I would agree with you. My recollection was that the conversation was clearly not complete. We did talk about it, but there was no call for a vote on how we should proceed. So I appreciate you bringing this conversation back up. Also, I would point out, you are absolutely correct. Our bylaws are very clear. Board of Education can invite, I referred to them earlier on, Joe Schmo into an executive session conversation, whether they're a primary candidate, whether they're elected or not elected. We could literally, as a board, go out on the street and say, hey, why don't you come on in this executive session? Of course, we wouldn't do that, but the bylaws clearly allow us to have that. It's not even subject to interpretation. It's very clear. We can invite whoever we want into executive session. I understand what my colleagues are saying about confidentiality, but there are ways around that. And no one is saying, certainly I'm not saying, Commissioner Malloy, that we should invite the potential board members to every executive session. Like the example that you gave in your case and Commissioner Adams' case, there was a reason to have board members, potential board members, yourself and Commissioner Adams, involved in those conversations because you were going to be working with those people. So I think there are some situations where, and I can't anticipate them right now, but there might be some situations where the board could have a real-time conversation about whether this is something that these potential board members ought to be involved in the conversation. I don't think we have to lay down a blanket rule now to say that they're invited to all executive sessions, but I think we ought to be flexible about that possibility because these people, after all, are going to be working with this district. And that's pretty much, I understand anything could happen in an election, but that's pretty much a foregone conclusion, just as it was in your case, just as it was in Commissioner LeBron's case, just as it was in my case, Commissioner Adams' case. And so in that regard, you know, people talk about comfort level. And I agree that the superintendent's comfort level is very important, but let's not forget who we are. We are entitled to be in a place where we are comfortable too. And I'm not even talking about today. I'm talking about in January of 2022, February and beyond. The whole idea of bringing these folks in early, to the extent possible, is to allow us to be comfortable. We all see what happens when we're not comfortable with each other. And so it's not just about technically onboarding, but it's also about making sure that people can operate at the relationship level that allows you to be effective. We all know what happens in this board and in other observations at other relationships. When the relationships are tight, the superintendent suffers. You know, you want to talk about the comfort of the superintendent. I have seen superintendents suffer because the relationships that board members have are not good. So if you start in June, or in this case, August, and you begin to pull people in as best you can, you're able to develop a relationship that benefits the superintendent. But let us not forget, it's important that current board members be comfortable. It's also important that if they get elected, and it seems to be pretty certain that they would, that they feel comfortable too. And then finally, with respect to this notion that someone who comes on the Board of Education doesn't, isn't fully prepared to do the job.
Yeah, I said that.
Well, this, Commissioner LeBron, Commissioner LeBron-
You don't need to respond to it.
Commissioner LeBron, this is not a debate.
Well, you're making it a debate by specifically calling out something that I'm saying.
Commissioner LeBron, please, respect the protocols. Respect the protocols, please.
As Chair of the committee, I'd like people to stop talking, please.
You don't need to address me either.
Madam Chair, I have the right to express my point of view.
Finish your point, but you don't need to address anything I said. You can make your own point.
So the logic is that if a board member says something-
Anybody runs for office and they're not prepared to do that job, then don't run for office.
Can we not interrupt each other?
The city of Rochester is in the state senate and its district because of that mindset and that logic. That's how we ended up with a board member like you for 16 years.
Are you finished, Commissioner LeBron?
Yeah, go ahead, Van.
Thank you. The logic is such that a board member can say something and another board member can't comment. That's just not how democracy, that's not how democracy works in Washington and Albany, and it certainly shouldn't work that way here. We should be an interactive democracy where we bounce ideas off one another. So with respect to my comment, that it is important that we acknowledge this, certainly I acknowledge, that there are superintendents, even the ones sitting to my right, entered this job not fully prepared. No one can enter this job, whether you're a board member, a monitor, a general counsel, a superintendent, no one enters this job fully prepared. And so if that is true, if you believe that, and I can't even imagine anybody debating that notion, that you could start this job knowing everything that you need to know. If you accept that as true, then the best thing that we can do for those people, for ourselves and for the superintendent, and most importantly, for this community, is to give those people a leg up on understanding things that they perhaps do not understand and couldn't possibly understand. No matter how much they wanted to serve the community, nobody comes into this job knowing full all the responsibilities and the laws and the regulations that we've even just discussed in this meeting. So it's clear, Commissioner Malloy, I fully support doing what we can to give these folks a leg up on understanding the job and serving the people that they are running to serve.
I don't know the laws now, but that's the reason why. Like that logic that folks are going to understand.
Again, because we're letting them come into these periodic executive sessions is illogical too. Some of you have been here for more than a decade and still don't understand lots of things that are happening. And again, it's going to take your own person who pushed an initiative to learn and ask questions, but I don't even want to keep going back and forth with you, but it's illogical too. So I just-
Okay. Do we have any other comments from commissioners? Superintendent Powell?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're coming. Oh, okay. Okay.
Basically, the executive sessions that I did attend basically was around paying of a clerk. It really was, because I had got rejected from some, and I remember feeling some kind of way about that. But in hindsight, I really don't want him in the executive session because, let me tell you something, what I've learned is that there ain't no such thing as, people have been out, people went to Bob Lonsberry on me so fast. It really was ridiculous. And I put, I put a bullseye on a couple people's back because of that. And the bullseye is still there because I ain't all the way sure. This, it really is to free them up. They can't be blamed for anything that's revealed. Because right now, that is, it would just make it be more bullseyes on people's back because I wouldn't know if it was them again. So for their own protection of how I might feel about them, they might just want to stay out of the way. But I really don't recall going to, I remember Superintendent Wade stayed specifically not allowing me to go to a couple executive sessions. I didn't think they were that critical, but we were not allowed to go in there. All the way up until like December 19th, I remember that day, all the way up until, and we got fully elected in November, all the way up to December 19th, there was all kind of secretive stuff going on, that I just was not, did not have access to. I remember having a discussion with Commissioner Powell out there because I couldn't be in the executive session. She asked me how I would vote on that budget and I told her, but I couldn't have, because I couldn't be in the executive session. So I had to tell her out there how I would have voted. So I don't really support people putting themselves in a position to not be able to get along with other commissioners because that's how it would be for me. I might have to put a target on your back because I wouldn't know for sure if it's you that's gone to Bob Lonsberry on me. So having said that, I also need to say that sometimes, because of my experience, my wife had been on the board and I had been coming to board meetings kind of all the time, I kind of thought that I, to be honest with you, I kind of thought I was a board commissioner two years before I ran for board. And I might have interacted with folks in an inappropriate way. And if I did, I apologized to them for acting like I had rights to something. I didn't. And so I just, I just want it to be a smooth transition for them coming in because I really want for them to be a success on this board. I am not going to be here. I again will tell y'all I'm not rerunning again. So there's nothing political about this for me. I'm the one that has no ambition on this board. So I really, I really, in saying this for, I think was the best of the board, best of the board, with that I'm clear.
Dr. Adams? And Dr. Jala, did you want to?
No.
Okay. Go ahead, Dr. Marismal.
So it looks like, it seems like there are four areas that we're focusing on. Public meetings and attendance, and it's attendance, not participation, because only commissioners can participate. And those can be done either, since we're currently in person, or you can watch them in the pleasure of your living room or anywhere else. So that doesn't seem like that that's a debate. Materials, the materials are posted on the website, that information is available, that can be viewed either online or you can download them for your viewing. So that doesn't seem like that that's an issue either. The orientation of board members, we have that outlined, and I think that's really where the strength comes in, of making sure that commissioners incoming know how to read the board agenda, right? Understand why are the reasons that you can go into executive session. They understand the Department of Teaching and Learning, the Office of the Superintendent, the Legal Department, human capital, et cetera. And so you have, one of the things that we have not done as good a job on, but we are, I believe, we are improving, is to really have very strong orientation where the incoming commissioners are meeting with the different individuals, administrators, cabinet members, who they will have regular interface with. So I think that's important. The one piece that I think seems to be debatable or conflicting is executive session. We know that executive session is very specific and have a very specific set of rules of engagement. And as it's been said, that, you know, that there's been allowances, not allowances, people's feelings were hurt, they were okay, you know, all of the above. And so I think it's important that if we think, as we think about executive session, and all I can speak of is my experience of almost being an eight-year superintendent in a Monroe County district, we didn't allow Commissioner, or Board of Education members into executive session because the protections that when you are a commissioner or a board member are not there when you're incoming. And so it's a protection, I think, certainly for the information that we need to be, that we need to share with you all, but it's also a protection for the person. And it's not a matter of being exclusionary, letting someone out, but if, you really don't understand exec session until you get into it and then I'm explaining or Steve is explaining or any one of my cabinet members. So as long as we clearly make sure that the commissioners who are incoming understand why are the different reasons that we go into the executive session and maybe some general examples, you can't really get yourself prepared for executive session. The only thing that I would argue that you might want to have an incoming, and this better not be happening, is that if you're looking for a superintendent, you're going to want the new commissioners. And I said, better not, Commissioner Malloy, that you, you know, that you would want that person involved in the process, right? And then you could, you could sign some agreements. But it's all about the training and making sure they get ready. And we do our due diligence to make sure they are ready to hit the ground when they say their oaths and they come. But really, it really seems like the only thing that's under kind of debate is executive session. And I think for mutual protection, that we make sure they understand- And I think for mutual protection, that we make sure they understand what's involved with executive session, the different reasons why you go in, and then they start attending come January. And that's just my input.
Thank you, Superintendent. President White.
Yeah, I purposely didn't mention that, Leslie, because we shouldn't be looking for a superintendent. But you're right, that would be one good example of where you'd want to pull somebody in. But hypothetically, let's say, for example, and I don't know where we're at exactly in the process, I'm looking over to our clerk, but let's say hypothetically, within the next five months, we're able to identify potential candidates to fill Rahima's position. That's an example of where I would think we could fill out a confidentiality agreement, because you wouldn't want these would-be board members to not have a say in who would be working with them. So, that, I said, and I think I was very clear, I wasn't talking about a blanket, let's let everybody in the executive session. What I was saying is, and I purposely didn't use it, I was thinking of that, but I thought, oh, no, she might take that the wrong way. That's not going to happen.
I hear you. It was supposed to be elected.
But I can think of a situation like hiring Rahima's replacement, where we would, you would think we would want to exercise that kind of discretion that our bylaws allow to allow these people to participate. And I can think of other examples. All I'm saying is, we ought, flexibility ought to be the rule of the day, because there might be a situation where we could fill out a confidentiality agreement and make sure that these would-be board members, potential board members, have an opportunity to participate in a conversation that could affect them.
Thank you, President White.
Yeah, I just want to respond to the confidentiality agreement and what legal actionifications could we have. I don't think there's anything that we, there would be no consequences. And I'm looking to you, Steve, I'm just trying to understand on a confidentiality piece of having them sign something. Although, even though I just argued with Van, I do agree that there are, for that particular situation, because that is not a district employee yet, and it is not someone that is in our K-12, you know, pre-K-12 system, that is someone mostly working directly for the board, not necessarily in the entire system. I just don't understand what actual legal consequences could be if someone broke that confidentiality agreement. Enlighten me, please.
I will do my best. In anticipation of this, I had actually drafted up a confidentially nondisclosure executive session attendance agreement and provided a copy for President White just to peruse as another lawyer and as the president of the board. In it, it essentially puts some penalties in that the person recognized that they've been advised that there are confidentiality protections in all executive sessions, and that their failure to maintain the confidentiality, if proven, could be used in a disciplined action by the Commission of Education once they are actually sworn in as board members. That was the protection that I put in place, because that's a protection that exists for all of you. You know, disciplinary action up to and including removal is a potential penalty for any board member who breaks executive session. And clearly, when you're, you know, you invite other non-board members in, but they're always district employees, so that clearly the other discipline we have is discipline up to and including termination. So, I built a, you know, an agreement, I have copies with me, where that's the potential consequence if someone's found to have, you know, at some point actually breached the confidentiality. It would be up to the Commission of Education as to whether she would choose to enforce it or not. I can't opine as to what she would do on that. That is the best I can do for you all as far as providing some level of protection, so.
Okay, I just want to follow up on that.
Let me, please let me just say this here, so that we don't get this too blurred.
Okay.
The situation with me, where I was talking about they went to Bob Lonsberry on me, it was more or less about like hiring Rahima. To be honest, it was about getting a replacement for Natalie Schaper. And it ended up being Bob Lonsberry. It ended up being so, and so, when you talk about, if it ain't the superintendent, it's somebody like Rahima, it was about what was said in there, and it was about a replacement. Same, the exact same scenario. So, that, the example given does not give strength to me to support them being in executive session.
I hear you, Commissioner Adams. And I was there, and I agree, and we all know who did it too, but we're not going to discuss it here. But I honestly cannot see how the Commission of Education can use her authority to say, I'm going to potentially remove someone who wasn't an elected official, which she has no authority over yet, even in a commissioner-elect position. I could be wrong, but I also know Betty. I would be more than happy to reach out to Betty and ask her for her opinion on it, or Dr. Jallows, who's also representative of the state. I just cannot imagine that that is something that's even enforceable, even in her role to say, I'm going to remove someone who made a violation, pre-swearing in under the authority of New York State law and her authority as a commissioner. I could be wrong, I just can't see how Betty can like backtrack and give someone a consequence when they're not even in the preview of her --
Well, that was what my question was. What is that, is that based on previous, a previous situation that has occurred? Steve, because I can't see, I think, and maybe, I just want to make sure I heard correctly, you said that's the best attempt to come up with it, but it's not based on actual anything from the commissioners' regs or anything relative to --
No.
Okay.
No, I looked through commissioner opinions. There's nothing that's been covered in this, but it's very rare that non-employee, non-board members are invited to executive session. That's why it would be unusual to find something.
Yeah, that's why you don't do it that often, correct.
But I was tasked with attempting to make my best effort to create something that would have a potential consequence. That's the best I can come up with. I cannot opine as to what the Commission of Education would do with that, so.
All right, so just continue the discussion, this robust discussion. What are our next steps as a board? So, it appears that we have disagreement amongst our board members, and it looks like the people, of the people sitting here, we have three people who are very much against having commissioners in executive session, and three who would be okay with having commissioners be invited to certain or select executive sessions. We don't have Commissioner Powell here to weigh in, so I don't have any way of knowing what, how she feels on this issue, other than what she's already said. But what are our next steps, President White?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest, I mean, you don't even have to vote. I mean, you can just sort of, I often just sort of look at the lay of the land and let's just move on. There's no reason, technical reason to -- Steve, I'm looking at your eyebrows and you're sort of frowning, so.
No, no, I was just looking, I know if you're asking me for something.
No, no, okay. I mean, we could technically vote, but sometimes as a person in charge with running a meeting, if you don't see the votes, there's no reason to have a vote. I make the same observation you do, it seems like if you voted, it would be a three reason, it would be no -- the only other observation I would make is that for me, in the remaining time that I am here, it would be very difficult for me to, let's say, in a Rahima-type situation, leaving aside all these other situations that happened, it would be very difficult for me to vote in the next six months to replace Rahima, knowing that Ricardo and I, not Ricardo, that Bill and I are not going to be here, because I think that would be very unfair to the people that are going to be working. So, and there could be other situations like that. I use Rahima as an example, but I'm just letting you know that I don't think we have to vote, but I would tell you when it would come to vote for a replacement for Rahima. I would be very reluctant to put my judgment in the place of two people who I know are going to have the seat. And that doesn't, that doesn't create an impossible situation. We could continue to hire temporaries, you know, there's ways. I just want you to know that, and I could see other situations where the board is involved in a decision about an employee that we have direct impact with. I can think of at least one other situation where I would say, if these people could not be invited into executive session, I would feel like it would not be appropriate for me to vote, because I'm not going to be, I have some experience, I think, that is valuable, but I do not think it would be appropriate for me to substitute my judgment for a person who we know is going to be in my seat. But that's just me.
Okay.
Let me shorten this for everybody. Basically, the bylaws provide that each time you go into executive session, you decide who, if anybody, to invite in. You don't need a blanket vote today, it wouldn't really make any sense anyway. You just wait till you get to a particular executive session, and if you get four votes, it carries, if you don't, it doesn't. And that's really what the bylaws provide. So, that's, I don't think you need to do it today, anyway.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes, I did have one question. We talked about protections for the district, but what about protections for the individuals? Because my understanding is, they're not covered by, they would not be covered by our DNO insurance, because they're not yet officers of the organization. So, in a rare case that the board may get sued, what protections will, would those incoming board members have, since they're not board members yet? And how do we hold them harmless?
You really can't. I mean, there's no authority to provide any protection to them until they're officers. It's, I don't even think under the educational law you could extend that courtesy. You can only do it for people acting in an official capacity. So, to that very limited point, no, I don't believe that there would be a way to do that.
Well, thank you so much, I appreciate the robust --
I was going to just comment to what the president has said. Even if the board member-elect did not have an opportunity to participate in the hiring of staff, the fact of the matter is, you've got to learn to work with people, whether they participate in that interview process or not. And I don't see Commissioner-elect Patterson or Simmons having a problem with whoever we put in there, you know, it's just a matter of, you know, personal relationships and interaction, and you learn to work with people. So, you know, I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you very much. President White.
Not on that point at all, but something that was said earlier on about the sharing of documents. I had even said that many of the documents that these folks, Simmons and Mr. Patterson, would receive are foilable anyways. They made a request, given the current situation, probably take thirty days or more to get those documents. That wouldn't be very helpful to them. So, I just want to be clear that, for example, the letter to Commissioner Rosa was a letter that Mr. Patterson and Ms. Simmons could have foiled and gotten within thirty days or whatever. I know that's how it is at City Rochester, the county, I got a request into the county, they're telling me a minimum of thirty days. Rather than have them make that request, I said to our clerk, give them a copy of that letter to chance to Commissioner Rosa. So, I just, I didn't want there to be any misunderstanding, that while there are documents that they could go on board docs or whatever to get, whenever I have a chance, and I guess it's up to my colleagues how you want to share your correspondence, but whenever I have a chance, and I know it's foilable, but I don't want them to have to make a request or to get out into cyberspace, I, in the case of the letter to Chancellor, Commissioner Rosa, I make sure that they get a copy of that correspondence, because I think they need real-time information when it's available, rather than, because the reality with foil requests, you've got to know what you want, and I just don't want, now, they could go on board docs, but I just want folks to know, because I don't want there to be any surprises. In some of my correspondence, I say, go ahead, send it to them.
But couldn't that be viewed as you're moving out of the realm of the president role, because that letter was not written on behalf of just you as a commissioner, but written on behalf of this board? So, I would just suggest, Mr. President, that you be mindful, you know, what you're sending, particularly if you're sending it on behalf of the board, the board needed to have been aware of that. Now, if it was something that you were sending on a personal level, that's something different. But you sent that based on, as representative of this board. So, I just ask you to be mindful of that.
I would just note that the bylaws make it very clear, I have to have, when sending out correspondence, I have to have the board review it. It does not relate to who it is distributed to. And the reality is, this is what my thinking on it, so I hear what you're saying, but it doesn't relate to, am I authorized to distribute it? That particular provision requires that before I send something out, that I get you all's approval to send it out. It doesn't say, this is what you're allowed or not allowed to do with it when you send it out. And then the reality is, with something like that, I use that as an example, it's the only example I can think of, I think that is something that we, as board members, and I didn't make this inquiry, but that's something that anybody would want any citizen to have access.
It could be viewed as an ethical issue.
I disagree.
Okay.
I don't see how, again, I'll reiterate, that bylaw says, board president must get substantive review by board members of what he's writing. It does not restrict in any way what, where that document goes. And in fact, the reason behind you all's consent is to make sure that if it gets out in the public space, it is something that the board agrees to. So, again, it doesn't restrict my ability, and I see no ethical violation whatsoever.
Well, we'll disagree, we'll agree to disagree, because they are elect, board member-elect, and so you gave it to them specifically, you didn't give it to just regular members of our community.
I could do that tomorrow, I'm sorry.
No, I'll just leave it at that, I just want, I just want you to be mindful of that, but you are taking a different approach, and I just put it on the table.
Very well.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Yeah, I just want to clarify that, so, I think any of us could send information, and we do, so I kind of see both sides of this issue. However, I just want to note that sending an email like, hey, if I don't hear from you in two hours about objections to this letter, I'm going to send it out, is not a style that works for me. Again, I work full-time and also have a small child still at home, so I just want to put that on record. So, sometimes you guys do send correspondence on behalf of the entire board, and not all board members agree with it. I did see the email, I was in the middle of something, so I did not have a time to respond to say my objections, but I also know that I can object individually as a commissioner and write my own letter to the commissioner about why I object. So, I just want to put that out there, that that's also not the best practice as board president to get consensus.
Thank you, Commissioner Lebron. President White.
Yeah, I would just note, just so that the record is clear, no one gave anybody two hours to email to my colleagues that had the letter to, proposed letter to the commissioner indicated, please get back to me, and the clerk can correct me, I believe it said forty-eight hours, two days. And in fact, the letter didn't go out at least for four days, might even have been longer than that. So, again, we shouldn't say things that aren't factually accurate, and yes, it is appropriate when somebody says something at the DS, if you have something to say in response to that, that you say it. And I'm saying, it was not sent out with two hours notice, it was sent out specifically with forty-eight hours notice, and the actual letter didn't go out at least four days after I had drafted the letter. And I got no response, I got a response from one board member, and that was it.
Thank you. Before we leave tonight, shameless self-promotion here in a way, well, not self, I just wanted to wish my daughter a happy thirteenth birthday. Ella Malloy, happy thirteenth birthday. You're a teenager. I'll be there soon for dinner. In any event, I think that concludes the Governance Committee. Thank you for the discussion, commissioners. And, oh, do we have something else that we need to add?
Just one last thing, or a meeting poll for this evening was emailed out this afternoon. We're using a Google form now that we're no longer on Zoom, so please use the link in your email to respond to the poll. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. All right, with that, can I get a motion to, oh, do we have an executive session we need to go into?
Yeah, we do.
All right, motion, can I get a motion to go into executive session?
So, move.
To discuss matters, the appointment of particular individuals.
Do I have to say that?
Yes.
To discuss matters relating to the employment of a particular individual. Did I get it?
So, move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any opposed? All right.